We're good?
Yep, you're good.
For recording, I'd like to call the regular meeting to order at seven thirty six. Because this is a separate meeting from the public hearing and we had to stop and re-record for this. I would like to ask everyone again to stand for the Fledge of Legions. While we are the Fledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. We stand one nation under God, indivisible, created in justice.
Alright, thank you all. Alright, item number three on the agenda, seating of the alternates, we do not have any alternates tonight. So we're going to move to item number four on the agenda, and that will be public comment. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment going twice? Any public comment going three times? Public comment is now closed, moving to item number five on the agenda. The approval of the public hearing minutes from March fifth, twenty twenty. In your packets, you should have received the minutes from the public hearing.
Move to it, Chuck.
Okay. Motion by Phil, second by Paula, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jeff, that's an aye?
Aye, yeah.
Phil, alright, nobody opposed, nobody abstaining, motion carries. Item number six on the agenda, the approval of the regular meeting minutes, March fifth, twenty twenty, there again in your packets. You should have received the minutes for the regular meeting, motion approved. Motion by Phil, second by Paula, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying, or motion carries, Jeff, you got it, you're good, right?
Yep, aye.
Okay, cool. Alright, item number seven on the agenda, Fort Buckingham Road variance, which was the public hearing that we just exited. Um, so, let's discuss this a little bit, Phil.
Okay. Here with me. They went all about my beginning part is not going to be, it's going to be, not my decision, but my opinion about this entire matter. Number one. The, the statutory hardship has to do with the property. The statutory hardship explanation is the burden on you to explain how the zoning regulations as they stand and for the property itself either destroys or greatly limits the utility of your property. Okay, destroys or greatly limits. The existing house is not conforming on one side, you understand? That's in, and that's nothing you can get done, and out. My opinion is that a reasonable use of your property would be a garage. Well, if there was a zoning, somebody came to this board and asked for a variance for building garage on a property. My opinion is that is a reasonable use of their property. And we would have the option of a variance to grant them to have a garage. The, what you're asking for is that you wish to make an addition, and it's right in your application, garage is add to your garage. As the regulations state, there, there is the opinion of the board that now is great in the city, because but the, the, the regulations, the zoning requirements, this is not something that should be, say, a reasonable use of property, this is a wish, this is something that they want. So just understand that as we go forward. My opinion is it's difficult to say, why, that's the law I said before into Plan B or Plan C. These type of applications I've been on this board for, going on two decades. I would, I don't, I'm only have one vote and one opinion. I, I would strongly ask for a Plan B, because this is not a garage, it's an addition into a wish. If you came back and said, this is our Plan B, it doesn't work, it doesn't meet, and then we had a problem or a severe litigation. I would be more prone to say, your first application is, is what you thought. I'm not trying to do the bad job here, but there is responsibility in each kind of decision. This is not something I would say, you're the town plan, correct? Can, can you give us some light on the, the application of the regulations in this situation?
The application of the regulations? They, there is, there's a setback, there's, you know, obviously both standards have to be adhered to, being setbacks, coverage, et cetera. The idea of a hardship, like you said, is based on the inability to follow rules in this specific property. But not specifically to that property, or reasonable, or the reasonable use of the property, and or topography, big rocks, big boulders, something that makes a lot unusual, and or irregular states. I think, I, I'm not going to weigh in on if this, if the applicant should or should not get the variance. And I'm really not going to weigh in whether the hardship itself.
Yeah, but as the town planner, yes, in the past, I've asked the town planner for Kenyon and interpretation.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Well, I, I, I don't want to give that opinion because I don't think that, I mean, I'm, I'm just kind of the, the pitcher that came in the last week without knowing that this was going to happen. But my opinion is, if this commission believes that due to the topography, or due to wetlands, due to the irregular state shape of the property, then a variance would be wrong. So I, I'm really passing it back to you, and I'm saying that if you believe that one of those characteristics is characterizes this property, then I think you have a good decision.
I, I understand that, but why I'm stuck on the treadmill of reasonable use of property?
Right.
Just because I want a two-car garage, just because I want a bigger storage unit, just because I want enough, a deck, just because I want this, doesn't necessitate that we grant across the board.
And I mean, yeah.
So, so there's a responsibility to say, why are we, and why are we not doing this? Just had town council come and talk us about our decision. The, the real decision here is going to be the definition of restricting reasonable use of the property. If there was no garage, and they're proposing a garage, that's all, will be reasonable use of the property.
Yes.
I'm stuck at, it feels to me, I just, it's not personal, please, it just feels to me, we're in a decision that says I just want more garage. You have to understand, that's before, that's before the hardship. Kids, but it's like when my cart before a horse, you, you were still on train?
Yes, and I would, I would give you an acting happen. Because of the fact that the physical garage exists.
So the discussion of hardship is secondary to the request, you're requesting something, you can't have it because of regulations, the goal for variance, and then you're introducing hardship. But there is no hardship, if you didn't have, if you didn't have, there is no hardship in play, absolutely none. If you didn't have a request for addition to the garage.
I would agree.
Thank you very much. That's the point I'm trying to, whether we go yes or no is another story, but I want to be clear on our responsibility and our decision process and why.
See, my opinion is a little different, but I will use my time at the moment now to just go down the line, so Jeff, what do you got?
Um, hearing that, I, I hear what you're saying, Phil, but, um, I mean.
It's only twelve feet. But it's only twelve feet, I, I mean, I understand.
Yeah, I, I, I know, but I, I, I'm just we've, just thinking in the past, uh, approved, thinking of things that could be additions in, in this logic, so I don't see the issue coming from there. I do understand where you're coming from, because it's, it's a want, and I get the whole cart before the horse argument and all that, but uh, I don't know if it's I, I don't know if I'm, I'm convinced to say no, because like I said, it seems to make sense to me. I, and like, and like I said, I don't have the charts before me to see what it looks like, and I, I know you guys were talking about before in the public hearing how the space in a different area might, if it could have been moved, if it would have negated this issue, or lessened it, so as, as of right now, I just, it's, it's hard for me to not be okay with the variance or something like that, so.
Alright, um, Phil? Yes, alright, so, like I said, I've been on the board for, for a little while.
Yeah.
The two points, A, each individual application stands on its own, it doesn't get taken back on any other decision you made regardless. That's one thing we were, I was taught was taught. And number two, if, if you, if you don't have all the documentation in front of you to make a good decision, in the past, we have asked for the applicant to come back, no extra application fee, for the Plan B, he had a chance for you to look at the situation. If you introduce that I don't have the documents, and you make a decision, there's question.
It's an excellent point, I, I don't argue that, Phil. And, and I understand that each application stands on its own, but I mean, past experience advises future experience, you know?
Right. Paula, we got?
What do you think? Is loud.
Yes, sure.
Paula, we can't hear you.
I'm not saying anything, yeah, I'm working it, I'm working it, hear me now?
Okay, yes.
Okay, so, um, the thinking that I have in my head is impactful about that with all the new parents. And in terms of building a garage addition there, there's no way we're going to go from a garage addition to a drop-in garage. You get into the house, because the door on the outside, even though you fill over a little bit, it's still not totally enclosed, you're safe. My other, just, I guess, comment, instead of just paying four thousand pounds, then you have four thousand pounds, four thousand four bedrooms, you start to, to anxiety, where you have nothing to hide, so. I'm just commenting on what's in the shape in my head, however, if I got to go, it's me, tell me exactly why it is a hardship. I'm not a hundred percent sure that a hardship is. Hardship doesn't matter. The hardship on the property doesn't matter, there is no hardship unless you ask for an addition. Then you, then you ask for an addition, and then you're trying to say that there's a hardship, that doesn't matter. Are you good? Are you ready?
Anything else? Okay, my take on this is actually pretty clear, pretty simple. Because, you know, the placement of the door, and your personal reasons behind wanting garage, really, to me, very relevant. Okay, we are here to determine if there's statutory hardship. And I understand, I know where you're coming, but to me, the statutory hardship is quite clear when it says that the parcel within not, is an existing non-conforming lot created prior to the present governing regulations, okay? So regardless, it, it, the zoning regulations came after this parcel was divided, okay?
Now, the amendment to the, to the zoning regulation came after the parcel, there was a regulation before it was built.
Okay, so then even if you want to go with that, okay, we're looking historically at, at some of the things that we have decided on using this exact hardship. You know, as far as I've heard, I mean, we've moved a lot more than, you know, twelve feet, you know, and this, and in this situation, we've been, you know, we're looking at it case by case, Phil, let me finish.
Go ahead.
Okay, we're looking at this case by case, there was no public comment, okay, there was no letters to the neighbors, okay? There was nothing really that anybody spoke out against, um, from the public whatsoever, you know, and seeing that in this particular case, and looking at the lot, I mean, I, I wouldn't say that, to me, I could justify the statutory hardship primarily because it was an existing non-conforming lot that was created prior to the zoning regulation. I mean, that's, that's my thinking, Phil, I mean, I know you've got some say, say.
The last thing I want to be is the guy that doesn't do the, help my day. I'm on this board for that reason, to help people, but you have to understand, there is nobody here opposing the regulation, but that's the reason why the four of us are sitting in these seats, is because we were appointed to hold up the regulation for the people of town soon.
Exactly.
Okay. Hardship has nothing to do with this application. Hard, if you want a variance for something of reasonable use of the property, and you can't do it because there's hardship imposed upon the property, then that's a discussion. Where the hardship is not on property, it's created because I want an addition to my garage. So what's the difference of every applicant coming and saying, oh, I want the sunroom, I want this, I want that, everybody wants, I get it, I understand. And you're right, twelve feet is not a big deal, and the neighbors aren't complaining, I understand that. But what's right is right, and what has to be discussed, and the reasons why need to be brought to date, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
So we're gonna, go ahead.
Let's, let's, let's look at it this way, though, because Paula did create a pretty good point, when she said that a four-bedroomed house, a one-floor garage, you expect more than one driver in a house that has four bedrooms, okay? So, that to me, I can see that being a little bit not an actual want, in that sense, to strengthen the actual hardship on the property.
But before today, before today, it's always been a four-bedroomed apartment house, and it's always had an existing garage.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is still a want for an addition to the garage, it's said right in the application, and I want to act more.
Right, okay, and we heard the reasons for the want, which to me, justifies somewhat of the need, if, if the need is really the piece that you think.
Correct, and I want to go in that direction wholeheartedly, but I would be remiss in my responsibilities if I didn't say, and want to say, is there a Plan B, can you show me a Plan B that's less non-conforming to the regulations than your wish list that's in one? That's the point I'm trying to make. I'm not trying to argue yes or no at this point, because nobody has a vote.
Yeah, yeah, right. Yeah, no, I'm, you know, look, we're having a discussion, right, on everybody's opinions on the case here. Um, aside from that, I really don't have anything else. Um, I'm here, what? What do you guys want to do?
I'm going to put my wish list out, okay? I would like, and I propose to put it in a motion. That we table the application as of today. So nobody feels forced to say yes or no for whatever reasons, and come back, back next month with a Plan B. Horrible, Mr. Horrible and Company can find any other solutions, any other, any other situation that's less non-conforming than, than exists in front of us. Not saying that, we would say Plan B is no good, doesn't meet your needs, we'll reconsider Plan A, and we will go through there, that's my wish list.
Okay, so are you actually making a motion to table?
You know what, yes, I am.
Okay, motion to table by Phil, second, second by Paula, there any discussion?
No, I'm, I'm okay with mo, uh, tabling for now.
Only, the discussion is only on how the motion's made in the second, not the content.
Alright, I mean, my thoughts on the motion is that I don't really think that we need to table this. You know, this to me is on the grand scheme of saying every cut and dry case compared to some that we've done, you know, and, uh, so I just don't feel the need to table this, but ultimately, you know, it needs to be everybody.
But, but, the reason why I request to table it is because if you, if apples to apples, this application should be denied. I'm looking for a reason to work it with a good conscience and good responsibility, and I think by doing that, tabling it, and asking for a Plan B is good responsibility, and also says, hey, yes, Paul, I made a request, and I feel much better about voting yes or voting no than I did last month, because I did this. That's where it's wanted, I, I asked.
So, let me ask this, I'm not really familiar with what happens, if you go back to Horrible and Judson. Um, so I'd like to defer this over to, uh, to Keith, and ask if they, if the applicant went back to Horrible and Judson in this way, okay? You know, if that's a whole separate thing that they're going to have to look at, because now, at this point, the application's going to change, because the ask of the variance is going to change, number one, excuse me, number one, and number two, are we really going to expect our applicant to go back just to give us a Plan B and spend more money on this to get, to get a second thing, I, that's what I'm asking.
Well, the change, let me just take it from the back. Any change that is done on the plan for the ZBA does not have to be a big quality. So Jesse and, and/or the applicant, right, we put a different, we put the same box, or a different box in another area and demonstrating to the commission, the board, that this is a, this is what they're offering. If the board feels that it's a major change, it's on another piece of property, it affects a different setback, it's larger, if, if it's, if it changes dramatically, then I would suggest that you deny the application without prejudice to accept a, a new application. There is some regular statutes that, that just, that don't allow you to, they concede the same application once. But you can see a change that if you feel, if you don't feel that it's, it's a minor change, it adjusted in some ways, you can consider it under the same application. And, and just, and, and, and approve it, or, excuse me, and act upon it at your next meeting. You, you, you have sixty-five days from the time you close your public hearing to make a decision, so, um, normally that's if you don't have a forum, or, or the, the applicant sees it going south, they can say, hey, well, let's delay the decision in open here, but I would say, my bottom line is, it depends on what they offer. And, and my suggestion to the applicant is, they don't, they would not necessarily need a full adjustment from their surveyor to make that change. When a building permit is gotten at the end, if, if, let's say, approved, and a building permit is obtained, then that, and the zoning permit is needed, then that AP survey will be changed at that point, okay?
Well, I can definitely tell you right now that if the Plan B is brought, moving this entire thing up rush to the house, that's going to require another certification. Because it's going to change the distance between the property.
Well, well, I, I, I'm not trying to, I mean, you put out a protocol that you, that you need to accept. Uh, and, and that would be as part of the, of raw application process of the AP survey. But to demonstrate to this commit, this board, that what it needs to do, you know, I, I don't really believe that an AP survey would necessarily, but I'm not trying to say what you're saying is wrong, I'm just saying, in my experience, the AP survey would not, would come at a later point with the variance, with showing the variance that was, was given, and I'm just using the something that, that is, that is conceded. I, I don't think that, we have a here, open motion on the picks, technically, I cannot accept any other discussion from the applicant's side. The, the benchmark that you have for what the variance is needed, that's up to the board to decide. Whether it, whether the applicant can demonstrate after this commission to this board at, at that time, at the next meeting, you'll have to make that decision. Okay.
See, I still just don't feel the need that we need to table this, and I think that we're really spinning around this here, I really do. So the motion's open, we have a second, all in favor of tabling until next month?
Aye.
Chair votes no, motions, uh, motion is tabled until next month.
Look, I just, Mr. Chairman, I just explained to the applicant what I did.
Yeah.
I understand what you did.
I, you don't care if you come back with this piece of paper with a crayon on it and say, this is the only other thing we possibly do. I don't want to deny your application and be the bad guy, but at the same time, doing nothing in rubber stamping applications goes against the grain of my responsibility and relation.
Okay. I think I have the right to respond.
I, I will allow the applicant to respond in this situation, because it is a unique situation, uh, so, go ahead.
First of all, I understand the point. I already explained to you that this is our Plan B, because we can try to put it somewhere else, but because of wetlands, we cannot. That, we discussed this with our, our survey. We thought of all kinds of situations, where to put it, we're not to put it because of the wetlands can become a subject, I think that's one of the first things I said.
I, I, I understand, my point again, I'll try to make my point again.
Is my point, I could write with a crayon, yes, it's still going to have the same effect, I can't move my, I can't make up plans, put a, put a, a subject.
Then I guess, then I guess with Plan B.
That's what I was trying to.
I understand that, but I'm saying, my point is this, I've asked, instead of just rubber stamping something that I think is not a hundred percent uh, rubber stampable, I'm asking for something to be done, and that is to show Plan B and table it for thirty days. And that is to show plan B and table it for thirty days. So if I'm questioning why you made the decision, at least I did that. You come back in thirty days at the next meeting at no additional charge, no extra money. And you show that plan B and I say, plan B is worse than plan A, but still plan A, then everybody's a winner and everybody gets. And it's not just wanted, that's all, that's the only reason why I'm doing.
So, uh, my comments on that is that I definitely, without a doubt. Do not think that we should be setting a precedence of this every single time, wanting plan A, B, C, and D when an applicant comes in.
Well, I'm sorry.
Now, we're never gonna get anything done, but all we're gonna do is continue to table these things. That's my feeling, though. You know, I mean, this is, you know, to me, it was a twelve, it was a twelve feet. You know, I thought, I think the hardship was pretty well steeped, okay? But if this is what we did, this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna come back here next month, okay, and the applicant will bring in a plan B. For us to look at, if there is no plan B, if this happens, you can plan B, you know, then we're back at square one.
And then you remove this one, pick it up and go, remove this one. The worst case scenario is we spot to get something. And they still get their application. The worst situation right now is they have to wait thirty more days. But yeah, we didn't rubber stamp it going off the door.
Exactly. But once again, you've got cases, ten times more complicated than this. Um, alright, moving on. Item number nine, new business. Does anybody have any new business they want to talk about? Okay, one new business, item number ten, correspondence. Did we receive any correspondence? Most that. Uh, any correspondence? No correspondence. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? I guess technically you're public. You got three minutes.
Can, can I speak? The, the, the main reason why I wanted to wait is because, like I said, I don't have any of the charts in front of me. From what you wrote, it sounds like it makes sense, but. From what it sounds like, looking at the charts, there might be other space and. For me, other s- space on your chart where the garage might go. And I understand that. That might not be the case, but not having it in front of me, and I just tried in the meeting to find it online and I wasn't able to, either because. I just don't know where to find it or because it's not there. I can't in good faith pass this right now. Um, tha- that's my main reason for tabling it.
Right, you don't, legitimately, you have a legitimate reason because you don't have the materials to make it important to say.
And it's, and it's nothing, it's, it's nothing against you. I, I don't, I, I hate taking up people's time, I hate wasting it. But tha- that's, that's my main reason for not being able to approve it at this time.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment going three times? Here you go, other public comment, and most public comment. Before we chart, I wanna go down the line. And, uh, get some board member comments because it seems though. It will last things that upon this board, so Phil, go ahead.
Just wanted to be completely clear. The rea- reason why. We've got, and we've done this many, 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 many times in the past. Previous town manager, the person that educated me, this building inspection. Here is a difference between reasonable use of the property and a want for an addition. Just want. Everybody that comes in with rubber stamping, they have to show some type of responsibility. That we're doing this with, with some type of, uh, thought and process. The, the postponing it for thirty days and asking for a plan B is the transparency of this board saying. We're taking some kind of responsible action, we're taking a second look instead of just saying. Uh, yes, go ahead, it's only twelve feet, yeah, it's only twelve feet, I understand that. But the next application's only twelve feet, the next one's only nine feet, this one, and no other application before this. I didn't wait on the decision of this application. He, the last thing I want to do is be the person that now I have, the applicant not happy with me and, uh. I'm wasting your time, and that's terrible, I know. But thirty days for us to be transparent and responsible, I think is a reasonable loss. And it has nothing to do with anything else, nothing about the application. But everybody that goes for a variance is stonewall on, um, hardship. There is no hardship or reasonable discussion of hardship because there's no hardship if you don't ask for an addition. You're not asking for a garage, there's a reason, you're not asking for an addition more, I want more. That's all you're asking is, this application only asks for more. For reasonable, responsible action, I'm just showing it, or. Doing something, take a second look, and not just to say, hey, look that board, just keep rubber stamping the last thing. It's not personal, and I apologize for your time and the, and, and, and the thirty days it's gonna. I, I'll give you my word, I don't be at that meeting to make sure there's.
Jeff, you got anything?
Uh, no, I, I, I think I said my part related to why I made my vote during the, uh, public comment and the response. And like I said, I, I wish I could have in good faith approved it today, but. I didn't feel like I could not seeing the, the charts. But thirty days, like Phil said, I will be there as well. I'll look at the charts and everything and make sure everything's set.
Nothing is ever cut and dried sometimes. Yeah. After, after listening to Phil, after having driven through the property and the neighborhood and looking at everything else that's there. I think that. I understand Phil's point, and therefore. With having a responsibility as a person sitting on the board, that I have to agree with Phil. My concern is that I would not want us to be perceived as rubber stamping things. Because then what's the point of us being? So I am screening your project. I also, like, I feel bad. Yeah, you got the feelings that you expressed in the public comment. However. I just don't want us to be this.
Alright, uh, I'll start by just saying that, uh, I'm very sorry that we have to postpone the next vote. Uh, because my feeling is that I've said it a few of times, is that this is something that I think is extremely. Clear, you know, I mean, um, you know, so with that said, I guess we will see you again next month. With a plan B, okay? Uh, item number twelve on the agenda, turn, entertain a motion for adjournment. Mostified by Paula, definitely by Phil, any discussion going in? May not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, we'll see you all next month.